0 approval of the minutes from March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one Board of Trustees meeting. May I have a motion?
No move.
Is that Trustee Connerton?
Yep.
And I'll second it Anthony.
Second by Mark. All in any, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Looks like unanimous, motion is adopted. Item two point zero Committee Report. We had a meeting, I chaired for Trustee Connerton in her absence on Tuesday. We approved the minutes, we went over the preferred action items which will address under item three point zero. We discussed informational items and the meeting was adjourned. So we'll go to item three point zero. Under the preferred action items, items three point one and three point were all reviewed, discussed and approved unanimously. So can I have a motion to? Move that?
No move.
Moved by Trustee Fiala, second by it looked like Trustee Ball. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Looks like that's unanimous, mo- motion is adopted. Item four point. One, recommend approval of resolutions granting emeritus status. I have a long list here, so we'll be here for a bit, so you guys. Ready, I want to see who's on first and maybe I'll do those in that order.
Do you want to approve the motion first and then read off the resolutions?
Oh, I can do that, yes, I'm sorry. Recommend approval of resolutions for granting emeritus, emeritus status to several. Employees of the college, may I have a motion for that?
No move.
Moved by Trustee Connerton, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Seraphini. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion adopted, unanimous. SUNY Board of Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Sandra Alter Ballard. Whereas Sandra Alter Ballard served in the SUNY Broom Community College since nineteen ninety seven as a devoted educator who embodied excellence, dedication, kindness, wisdom. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard or Ballard, my apologies.
Ballard.
Ballard, okay, was instrumental in writing and creating of the first time ever two degree program in sports studies. Whereas Sandra Alter Ballard was respected Chair of the newly named Department of Physical Education and Sports Studies for five years and spent countless.
It's frozen.
And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard was a strong advocate for a redone fitness center and led to the planning, construction which include installing new weight equipment, tele.
Yeah. Okay, we lost Anthony, so let me.
Well, Sandra, we have a nice big picture of you, so that's fun.
Thank you.
Let me check and see what happened to him.
He's not there. Hi, Dr. Drew.
Okay, now it's great, when it doesn't work, it's a pain in the neck.
Hi, Chris.
Hi Sandy. Can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, okay, good.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. I, I wasn't sure if I was doing this right, I had to, my other computer went kaput, so I had to go and get another one kind of quickly. And I'm, I'm still learning all the details about it.
That's what happens when you retire.
Lots of other things that you find that you have to do.
Yes.
It happens even without retirement.
Yeah.
Hi Donna.
Carol, I saw your piece on TV and what, what was it thirty-four about the chop thing? And your little speech was very nice.
Hey, Anthony is coming back on.
Thank you, I don't need, yeah, it was a lot of fun, we had such a great.
It looked like fun, yeah. It's good team building, I think.
Mm hmm.
For those kids.
Hopefully we can do it again next year, that's the plan.
We'll have trustee teams.
Yeah, that would be a laugh. Diana, you lied, he's not coming back, is he?
No, he, he was still reading and I said, well, Anthony, we can't see you.
Can't see or hear him. It's weird, it was my turn last time, although I froze up, I never went out.
And can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, there you are.
All right, my, it looks like our system here at Delta went down, so I don't, but I can't log on and the computers are down, so I apologize. So I will start over. Can you guys see me and hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
My apologies.
But I can hear you. Huh, oh there, I see you.
Okay. SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Sandra Alter Ballard. Whereas Sandra Alter Ballard served in the SUNY Broom Community College since nineteen ninety seven as a devoted educator who embodied excellence, dedication, kindness and wisdom. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard was instrumental in writing and creating of a first time ever two degree programs in sports studies. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard was a respected Chair of the newly named Department of Physical Education and Sports Studies for five years. And spent countless hours and dedicated attention to creating ten new courses to support the sports studies program degree. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard was a strong advocate for a redone fitness center and also led the planning and construction which include installing new weight equipment. Televisions and expanded capacity for cardiovascular equipment. And she also arranged opportunities for physical, physical education students to complete parts of their internship. In the fitness center and whereas Sandra Alter Ballard as Chair led the change of installing more modernized accuments. In the rooms used by all physical education students and faculty. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard supported the first ever fast forward courses in physical education, which has grown to twenty one courses. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard designed and created an adjunct office where the numerous physical education structures could meet with the students, have access to computers, et cetera. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard was the dynamic coordinator of the color run for eight years and is respected for mentoring new faculty experts in their fields. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard served the college as a person promoting the health of all. As a valued member of the college Wellness Committee for eight years. And she also offered wellness courses to college faculty and staff. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard. Form pathways to both SUNY Cortland and SUNY Brockport for SUNY Broom's physical education students. And whereas Sandra Alter Ballard retired in good standing on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Now, be it therefore resolved that the Division of the Liberal Arts expresses its deepest gratitude to Sandra. For steadfast, hard work, down to earth disposition which she brought to all of her activities. We are also grateful for her constant dedication to the college and wish her the very best in her future endeavors. And be it further resolved that Sandra Alter Ballard be granted the status of Assistant Professor Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College. With all of its privileges, I hereby certify that the above is true, Chairperson Panitia. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sandra.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, what a nice write up.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Congratulations, I apologize for dropping out.
That's okay.
Would you want to say a few words?
No, I'm all set, thank you so much, I, I appreciated every moment I had there and I'm adjusting well to retirement. And I'm very happy and I feel grateful for the experiences that I had there at Broom, both as a student and as a faculty. I felt very supported, thank you.
And they certainly enjoyed you there, I think, Sandra.
Yes. We miss you Sandy, we miss seeing you.
Hi. Thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll go on to the next one, SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for John Benel. Whereas John Benel be, beginning in nineteen sixty nine faithfully served the Business Programs Department. And SUNY Broom Community College as a department coordinator, teacher, mentor, advisor. And leader on campus. And whereas John Benel serves students. I'm hearing feedbacks.
You are, I hear it.
Serves students, the Business Programs Department and SUNY Broom Community College honorably and with the distinction for fifty one years. And whereas John Benel was a committed educator who truly cared for his students and has last, left a lasting impression on generations of students. And whereas John Benel was an active defender of the union activity and integrity. And whereas John Benel was always willing to take on new challenges and do much of the behind the scenes work that helped the Business Programs Department. Be one of the most efficient academic departments at SUNY Broom. And whereas John Benel was an active and supportive member of many campus wide shared governance committees, professional development mentoring committees. And promotion and appointment committees. And whereas John Benel was stabilizing influence in the Business Program Department. And as such was influential mentor and role model to students, colleagues and administrators. And whereas John Benel contributed his knowledge and scholarship by developing and delivering courses. On freshman experience, advertising, sales, marketing, human resource management, principles of management. And being Business Program Coordinator for the AAS in Marketing, Management and Sales and the AS in. Business Administration and served as an invaluable and influential mentor to these students and his colleagues. And be it therefore resolved that the Business Programs Department expresses their deepest gratitude and appreciation and appreciation for John Benel's dedication, devotion, respect. And support toward the students, faculty and staff and the campus community. And be it further resolved that John Benel be granted the status of Professor Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College with all its privileges. I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and correct, Chairperson Panitia. Is John on?
Don't think so.
Yeah, I don't see him.
All right. SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Dr. Thomas Crandall. Whereas Dr. Thomas Crandall began his extensive service to SUNY Broom Community College as an instructor on the Liberal Arts Division in nineteen sixty nine. And whereas Dr. Thomas Crandall held the position of Associate Counselor for SUNY Broom's Counseling and Student Development Center. For ten years from nineteen seventy to nineteen eighty. And whereas Dr. Thomas Crandall served briefly as Acting Director of Education Technology in nineteen eighty one. And whereas Dr. Thomas Crandall was appointed to the Director of Planning and Research from nineteen eighty one, eighty two. And whereas Dr. Thomas Crandall served as Chair for the Middle States Accreditation Program Committee in the nineteen eighties. And whereas Dr. Thomas Crandall has served the college for a total of fifty one years, thirty seven of them as a full time faculty member. From nineteen eighty three to two thousand twenty, first in the Social Sciences Department. And then in the Psychology and Human Services Department, teaching courses such as P I T, Psychology one ten, Psychology two ten, Psychology two twenty three, Psychology two ninety nine. He played a key role in curriculum development for the Human Services Degree Program and several core courses. Within it is as well as serving as advisor, mentor and role model for students interested in psychology and social work. And whereas Dr. Thomas Crandall co-authored a major human development textbook for McGraw Hill Higher Education. That was used at many institutions and is still a staple within Psychology and Human Services Department today. And whereas Dr. Thomas Crandall has always held students' success and academic achievement foremost. And it has guided his methods of teaching and counseling students. And be it therefore resolved that the Division of Liberal Arts expresses its deepest gratitude. For his long and committed services to SUNY Broom Community College. And his profession in areas of teaching, leadership, academic scholarship and service to campus and community. And we wish him the very best in his future endeavors and, and be it further resolved that Dr. Thomas Crandall be granted the status of Professor Emeritus. Of SUNY Broom Community College. With all of its privileges, I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and correct, Chairperson Panitia. Is Dr. Crandall on?
I don't see him.
Well, congratulations, that's quite a, quite a list and quite a long time of fifty one years of teaching, that's totally amazing.
He was a, he was a pretty good basketball player too.
Just ask him.
We'll go on to the next one, SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Dr. Richard Forenzy. Whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy has faithfully served SUNY Broom Community College for the past fifty one years. And whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy has served as the Chairperson of the Biology Department for thirty years. And in that time mentored and supported numerous faculty members along their professional journeys. And whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy has earned the Chancellor's Award for Excellence in Teaching and later earned the highly esteemed honor of SUNY Distinguished Teaching Professor. And whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy has advised and mentored thousands of students who have found success. In a multitude of scientific careers. And whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy has introduced hundreds of students to the unique and wondrous ecosystem surrounding us locally in the southern tier. And as far as the Florida Everglades and National Park in the Western United States. And whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy has treated numerous students to the literally evolutionary and scientifically revolutionary journey of Darwin. In his London courses. And whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy has taught and developed and co-developed sixteen courses. And through every course pulled the theory of evolution as a common thread. And whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy. Has received. The highly prestigious Friend of Darwin Award from the National Center of Science Education. An award he shares with past recipients including Stephen Gould of Harvard, Richard Dawkins of Oxford. And Kevin Payden of Berkeley. And whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy has held himself and his fellow educators to the highest standard in education. In the end, always strive to enrich the students' experience. Whereas Dr. Richard Forenzy. Has held himself and his fellow educators in the high standards. And always strive to enrich the students' experience, I said that twice. Be it therefore resolved that the Division of Science, Technology and Engineering and Mathematics expresses its greatest. And deepest gratitude for his long and committed services to SUNY Broom Community College. And his profession in areas of teaching, leadership, academic scholarship and service to campus and community. And wish him the very best in his future endeavors. And be it further resolved that Dr. Richard Forenzy be granted the status of Professor Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College. With all its privileges, I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and correct, Chairperson Panitia. Is Dr. Forenzy on the, on the Zoom call?
No, I don't see him either.
No.
Well, congratulations to fifty one years as well. SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Shelley Lewis Stanley. Whereas Shelley Lewis Stanley served in the SUNY Broom Mathematical Department as an adjunct starting in nineteen ninety one. And whereas Shelley Lewis Stanley served as a full time faculty in the Mathematics Department since two thousand five. And whereas Shelley Lewis Stanley was a dedicated mathematics professor held in high esteem by fellow faculty. And whereas Shelley Lewis Stanley enriched the Mathematics Department with her significant expertise in statistics. And whereas Shelley Lewis Stanley was integral in the Mathematics Department's Quality Assurance Program. And whereas Shelley Lewis Stanley advised the SUNY Broom Student Branch of the American Society of Quality. And whereas Shelley Lewis Stanley served on the Graduation Committee for many years. And whereas Shelley Lewis Stanley, Stanley integrated a new approach to teaching statistics through the Mathematics Department endowed chair. And be it therefore resolved that the Mathematics Department expresses its deepest gratitude for her dedication. And to her students and her fellow faculty members and thanks Shelley for her outstanding services and wish her the very best in her future endeavors. And be it further resolved that Shelley Lewis Stanley be granted the status of Professor Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College with all its privileges. I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and correct, Chairperson Panitia. Is Shelley on?
Yeah, I am.
She is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything or did I put you on the spot when I say that?
No, no, it's just, it's been a privilege to work with such esteemed colleagues, really, yeah.
Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Shelley.
Congratulations, SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Gerald Loy. Whereas Gerald Loy began in nineteen eighty seven faithfully served the Business Programs Department and SUNY Broom Community College. As Department Coordinator, Instructor and Advisor on Campus. And whereas Gerald Loy served students, the Business Program Department and SUNY Broom Community College honorably and with distinction for thirty three years. And whereas Gerald Loy was a committed educator who truly cared about teaching. And has left a lasting impression on generations of students. And whereas Gerald Loy was an active defender of union activity and integrity. And whereas Gerald Loy was an active and supportive member of multiple professional development mentoring committees. And took the initiative to lead many promotional and appointment committees. And whereas Gerald Loy contributed his knowledge and scholarships by developing and delivering courses in law and business. And provided academic service to the Business Programs Department as a coordinator for the AAS in paralegal and paralegal certificate programs. And served as an invaluable and influential member, mentor to these students. And be it therefore resolved that the Business Programs Department expresses their deepest gratitude and appreciation of Gerald Lloyd's dedication, devotion, respect. And support toward the students, faculty, staff and campus community. And it be further resolved that Gerald Loy be granted the status of Professor Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College with all its privileges. I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and correct, Chairperson Panitia. Is Gerald on the call?
Nope.
No, I don't see him.
Congratulations to Gerald. SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Christopher O'Rigger. Whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger faithfully served the English Department and SUNY Broom Community College as a scholar, teacher, mentor and leader on campus. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger, in his role as English Department Chair, defended the integrity. Of the pedagogy of the English composition in which the attitude and the thoughtfulness and joyful effort that served as an example for colleagues. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger served students, the English Department, the Liberal Arts Division and the SUNY Broom Community justly and with excellence. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger celebrated diversity and inclusion faithfully within the English Department. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger was a dedicated and kind and compassionate educator who listened and conversed with an open mind. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger taught courses on the literature of war in the interest of promoting peace. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger revitalized breaking ground, turning it into award winning literally, literary journal. And celebrated the creative work of contributors by organizing public readings. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger was a writer who worked in many modes including essay, poetry and fiction. Making him not only widely knowledgeable on the topic of craft, but also a gifted teacher capable of transmitting those skills. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger organized readings by a rich variety of contemporary writers. Inviting to the campus figures of national, international recognition. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger worked tirelessly for the benefit of the faculty and students answering questions. And resolving crises at whatever hour they arose. And whereas Dr. Christopher O'Rigger as Chair supported junior faculty in their professional advancement and established faculty in their academic goals. Be it therefore resolved that in light of such service, scholarship and accomplishment, Division of Liberal Arts and SUNY Broom Community College duly acknowledge him. And be it further resolved that Dr. Christopher O'Rigger be granted the status of Professor Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College with all its privileges. Privileges, I hereby certify that foregoing is true and accurate, Chairperson Panitia. Is Christopher on the phone?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words?
Um, just that the twenty seven years that I taught at the college went by so quickly now. And the past year has been kind of a, a blur. I miss the interaction with students, the face to face conversations that I've had with them. And seeing people blossom from coming to the college and then moving on from there. And oftentimes I get either emails or calls back from, from students to say where they are in their, their lives. And it's been really rewarding, you know? Anytime I've run into people off, usually at Wegmans. We have these wonderful conversations and. It's been, it's been a wonderful run and I've, I've really loved working for the college.
Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chris. Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thanks, Sandy.
SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Karen L. Pitcher. Whereas Karen L. Pitcher serves SUNY Broom Community College as librarian for twenty six years. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher has a role in every library service. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher served as a subject liaison of the Health Science Division, the Psychology Department and the Mathematics Department. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher implemented, tested and troubleshooted off campus access to library databases via easy proxy. To assure the students had continuous access to library resources. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher coordinated the library reference services and ensured the students were provided with high quality reference services. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher was truly a dedicated reference and instruction librarian, librarian. Working tirelessly to support students and faculty. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher shared her very high attention to detail to support the editing of many faculty books and publications. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher served as a mentor for the student, the SUNY Broom Librarians. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher helped students nationwide with her citation guides. And whereas Karen L. Pitcher oversaw the college archives and was an invaluable source of institutional memory and history. Now, be it further resolved that the SUNY Broom Library thanks Karen Pitcher for her excellent service and wishes her well in her future endeavors. And be it further resolved that Karen Pitcher be granted the status of Librarian Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College with all its privileges. I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and accurate, Chairperson Panitia. Is Karen on the Zoom call?
Yes, yes, I am. Thank you so much. I really loved my time at SUNY Broom of all the libraries I've worked in and appreciate the honor.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Karen, stop by.
Congratulations.
I will now that I'm fully vaccinated.
Yay.
SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Charles Petralowicz. Whereas Charles Petralowicz, beginning in two thousand two faithfully served the Business Programs Department of SUNY Broom Community College as a teacher and advisor on campus. And whereas Charles Petralowicz served students, the Business Programs Department and SUNY Broom Community College honorably and with distinction for eighteen years. And was, whereas Charles Petralowicz was a committed educator. And was whereas Charles Petralowicz was a committed educator who truly cared about teaching and has last left a lasting impression on generations of students. And whereas Charles Petralowicz was an active defender of the union activity and integrity. And whereas Charles Petralowicz was an active and supportive member of the multiple campus-wide governance committees, professional development mentoring committees, and promotion and appointments committees. And whereas Charles Petralowicz contributed his knowledge and scholarship by developing and delivering courses in law, accounting, and marketing, and served as an invaluable and influential mentor to his students. And be it therefore resolved that the Business Programs Department expresses their deepest gratitude and appreciation for Charles Petralowicz dedication, devotion, respect, and support toward the students, faculty, staff, and campus community. And be it further resolved that Charles Petralowicz be granted the status of professor emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College with all of its privileges privileges. I hereby certify that the certified that the foregoing is true and correct. Chairperson Panitia. Charles, are you on the call?
Yes, this is. Yes.
Yes. But you're muted, Charles.
You're muted.
Can everyone hear me?
Now we can.
I'd like to start off with thanking my students, the Business Department, the Community College Board of Trustees, and of course, my wife for enabling me to receive this award. It's been a pleasure. And of course, I hope to continue to teach for another fifteen years as an adjunct. So thank you very much.
Oh, well, we're glad you're not leaving.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Robert Woods. Whereas Robert Woods served in the SUNY Broom Mathematical Department as a full-time faculty member in nineteen eighty-six. And whereas Robert Woods was a dedicated mathematics professor held in high esteem by his fellow faculty members. And whereas Robert Woods developed many SUNY Broom mathematics courses, including Math one eighteen and Math one oh nine to help make mathematics more relevant to students. And whereas Robert Woods served on numerous campus-wide committees, including general education and open educational resources. And whereas Robert Woods was SBFA treasurer for many years. And whereas Robert Woods was beloved by his students. And whereas Robert Woods engaged with students both in the classroom and through campus activities, including the great book discussion. And whereas Robert Woods was also lending and helping hand to promote mathematics department, including participating in the organization, the M M M A A Seaway Conference on our campus. And be it therefore resolved that the mathematics department expresses its deepest gratitude for his dedication and devotion to his students and fellow faculty members. And thank Robert for his numerous and outstanding services and wishes him the very best in his future endeavors. And be it further resolved that Robert Woods be granted the status of professor emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College and all its privileges. I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and accurate. Chairperson Panitia. Robert, are you on the call?
No, he wasn't.
No.
Okay, I have to apologize because my cellphone, I can't see who's on the call. I can just see myself, so I have to ask that question. Congratulations, Robert. SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Dr. Mildred Simple. Simple. Whereas Dr. Mildred Simple, beginning in nineteen eighty-five, faithfully served the Business Programs Department and SUNY Broom Community College as a teacher and advisor on campus. And whereas Dr. Mildred Simple served students, the Business Programs Department and SUNY Broom Community College honorably and with distinction.
Message is app.
Pardon? And distinction, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
And whereas Dr. Mildred Simple was a committed educator who truly cared about teaching and has left a lasting impression on generations of students. And whereas Dr. Mildred Simple was an active defender of the union activity and integrity. And whereas Dr. Mildred Simple was an active and supportive member of the Department Professional Development Mentoring and Promotion and Appointments Committee. And whereas Dr. Mildred Simple contributed her knowledge and scholarship by developing and delivering courses in marketing and psychology and served as an invaluable and influential mentor to her students. And be it therefore resolved that the Business Programs Department expresses their deepest gratitude and appreciation for Dr. Mildred Simple dedication, devotion, respect, and support toward the students, the faculty, staff, and campus community. And be it further resolved that Dr. Mildred Simple be positively granted the status professor emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College. I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and correct. Chairperson Panitia. Is Dr. Mildred Simple on the call?
No, her sons are representing her. We have Bill and Scott Simple.
Bill and Scott, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, yes, mom really loved teaching and had a wonderful experience at B C C and want to thank the staff, faculty, and the students for that experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Echoing what my brother said, we deeply appreciate the camaraderie that the mom experienced at the college. And she'll forever live in the hearts of thousands of students. And she really found tremendous fulfillment through teaching at the college. It was it was a college to the students and it was a life to mom. And it was a really fulfilling and and very, very rewarding life. So thank you all so much for honoring her with this great recognition.
Well, she deserved it, I think.
Thank you for joining us tonight. We really appreciate it. Miss having Mid around. She used to invite me to her class every year. I was one of the highlights of my of my year to be invited to any faculty members' class, but she did it regularly. And I very much miss seeing her around and was very saddened when we learned of her passing. So thank you very much for representing her tonight. She leaves quite a legacy here.
It's our honor. Thank you.
And thank you for the scholarship you set up in her name. We really appreciate that as well.
And she loved helping students and that's what she would have liked also is to put resources toward helping students at your college. And then do the wonderful things that you do there.
Um, Dr. Drum, if I could just add, it's Kathy Williams from the foundation. And I just wanted to say to both of you and your families that you know, Mid Sample was a force to be reckoned with on this campus and we loved her dearly. And I can think of no better testament to her commitment and dedication than what you've done with your generosity. And we thank you very much and we promise to do the best to make you proud awarding to our students. And thank you. It's it's really a very fitting testament to your mom. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, SUNY Broom Community College Board of Trustees Resolution for Donna Rehack. Whereas Donna Rehack faithfully serves SUNY Broom Community College as a dedicated and talented staff associate for over seventeen years in the Division of Liberal Arts, beginning in June of two thousand and three. And whereas Donna Rehack assisted division chairs and faculty in the implementation and review of many LA degree and certificate programs. And whereas Donna Rehack was coordinator and advisor to the students in the individual studies program and their liberal arts program in their pursuit of employment and or transfer to a four-year degree. And whereas Donna Rehack consistently went above and beyond to assist chairs and coordinators and meet the student needs oftentimes at nights and on weekends. And whereas Donna Rehack helped with the constant and ongoing challenges that students have in their choice of programs, courses, fulfillment of the degree requirements, degree work issues, campus awards, advising disputes. And whereas Donna Rehack taught as an adjunct for many years, nurturing her students with the same respect she has for her colleagues, always there for her colleagues, no matter what issue. And whereas Donna Rehack participated in college shared governance and contributed to the campus community through service on committees at the department, division, and college level, including the General Education Committee. And whereas Donna Rehack served on the Middle States Section for Teamworking to ensure that SUNY Broom would meet and exceed the requirements of reaccreditation. And whereas Donna Rehack retired in good standing on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. Now, be it therefore resolved that the Division of Liberal Arts expresses its deepest gratitude for her dedication and devotion to her students and fellow faculty members. And thank Donna for outstanding services and wish her the very best in her future endeavors. And be it further resolved that Donna Rehack be granted the status of Staff Associate Emeritus of SUNY Broom Community College with all its privileges. I hereby certify that the foregoing is true and correct. Chairperson Panitia. Donna, I think I saw you on the call prior to losing my screen.
Yes. I am on the call. Thank you. And I I do thank the the board for extending your time tonight to hear about all the employees that you've listened to so far. And I did want to add a few words. Though I served the college for only seventeen years, our time goes back a long ways. My husband and I both graduated from SUNY Broom and made the decision that it was important in our life. So much that we've been contributors to the college since the sixties. I joined the foundation in eighty-one. I've been an avid spokesman for the foundation in thinking that ours is one of the best foundations for community colleges in the United States that can't be overlooked. And Kathy, you know, that's always my soapbox. I served also as the first woman on the foundation board. So I have a long history with Broom and it was my privilege to be just through God's providence to be able to finish my career there. It was my third career. And I loved every minute of it. I I didn't see myself as retiring, but boy, I'm glad I did. I didn't realize that it was so much fun. But if if you could just bear with me for two more minutes, I want to read to you the mission statement that I wrote the day I went to the college and that I feel that I performed for the seventeen years that I worked for joyfully. And it says, "With a focus on student-centered surface, I would like to provide the best possible support and information to my colleagues and students that will enhance enhanced information flow, productivity, and working relationships within the Liberal Arts Division and between the Liberal Arts Division and other campus departments. I would like to continue to be an effective ambassador between the campus and community to form partnerships that will enhance our students' opportunities for learning and professional development." And it was my joy, I I assure you, every day that I worked there, that I could serve in that capacity. So thank you so much for allowing me to do that.
Thank you, Donna. Congratulations.
Bless you.
Yeah.
You may know her from a previous career, right?
I miss our seven thirty PM conversations we used to have. I think we were always vying who was going to be the last one in the office, you know, especially on a Friday night. You were always you were always there. You were always there for the English Department.
We had no life, right, Chris?
It was all it was all in liberal arts and the college. Yes.
Well, thank you again, board, for for bearing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just make a note to everyone. You'll have to go into your view and change it back to gallery view because spotlighting people automatically defaults to that. So if you want to see the whole gallery, you'll have to change your view.
Okay, thank you, Diana. Four point two, recommend approval of the B production and record certificate program. And a motion. Well, motion by Margaret. Second by any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is adopted. Four point three, recommend approval resolution endorsing institutional learning outcome number seven, racial justice equity.
I'll move it.
Who who was the first motion? I didn't catch it.
Margaret.
Margaret? Barbara?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Four point four, recommend approval of revised surplus property policy. May I have a motion?
Still move.
So moved by trustee Connerton. Was that trustee? Mark? Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is adopted. We'll go on to five point zero informational items. Dr. Drum, want to give us the president's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lots of recognition tonight. And now I'll provide a little bit, little bit more here. This is like, I guess, like the Tonys, since everyone is live and their their performances for for SUNY Broom with the one sad exception this evening. But she certainly was more than alive when when Mid was here. I want to start out by thanking trustee Ball for her years of service to the SUNY Broom Board. You all recall that last month was announced that Sharon would be retiring from our from our board due to health reasons. And you as I want to echo Jim Orban's sentiment when you announced that what a tremendous trustee and supporter of the college and our our Jiminy Cricket. And on many occasions, Sharon, you'll be missed in in that regard. And we wish you well. We we have our beautiful SUNY Broom retirement clock here that will be ordinarily I would be handing this to you with the okay of flowers, but it's kind of hard to send flowers through the mail. So although we could FTD them, I suppose. And we're we're so grateful for your service. And there's a little certificate here. You probably have lots of them, especially from your journalism days. It reads and another pronouncement here this evening, the president of SUNY Broom Community College on behalf of faculty, staff, students, and fellow trustees, thank Sharon Ball for your service and dedication as trustee of the Board of Trustees from July two thousand and seventeen to April twenty twenty-one. Gosh, seems like just yesterday that you that you came on the board. We're so grateful for your service to the college. And we'll be shipping these off to you. Do you want to say anything for your last word meeting?
I'm 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 so touched. I'm I'm surprised and touched and having a little trouble getting the words. Now you know that's not like me. I I am, you this is a wonderful institution and you all are you have just touched my heart. I have learned so much. And I hope to take it, you know, with me for a long time. My 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 time in working with the Middle States Steering Committee was one of the most powerful experiences of my of my, you know, professional career. You are blessed with some wonderful staff and faculty here. And 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 I have learned so much from this board. And I just I just wish you all well. And I wish this institution well. These students are profoundly lucky. And I I just wish you all well. And thank you. I'll see you around town when we can get, you know, face to face again, for heaven's sake.
Thank you, Sharon.
We're gonna miss you.
Thank you, Sharon.
We're gonna miss you a lot.
You will miss you.
Thanks.
And another congratulations to our, Ameritize, is that plural? I, I, I think professors, what a testament to the wonderful talent we have here at, at SUNY Broom. I'm always moved by, by the resolutions and what folks have, have contributed to the, to the college over the years. And happy for them that they've been able to move on, but sad, sad for us. Again, thank everyone for their extra effort during this COVID period. Hopefully coming to, to an end soon with the advent of vaccinations. We had walking vaccinations today. The appointments weren't full. I hope that's because so many people out there are getting vaccinated that they don't need them at this point. But thanks to everybody across the board for all of the extra effort for these last fourteen months or so. Now, lots of light at the end of the tunnel, especially on those moments the sun came out on this weird, on this weird day, hopefully the last gasp of, of winter. Hard to believe, but this is our first board meeting since our Middle States visit. So many people cast dozens and dozens, you know, to thank for the success we had in our, our Middle States visit. You know, Penny's and Kim's leadership was just extraordinary, especially coming in kind of in the middle of the whole self-study process. They weren't in position to help us kick it off. And to all of the teams that studied, that steering, took the steering committee and all the seven team, seven teams looking at each individual standard. We, we thank everybody there, you know, very, very much. All of our, our finance crew, in addition to Middle States had to deal, I think, with four audits this winter and spring on top of Middle States, an area where you can easily get in hot water with Middle States. And we came through with flying colors, as, as they say there. I want to thank our, our finance team as well. That's a very, especially in this environment, very easy way to get yourself into, into trouble in general and then in Middle States accreditation trouble. So thank you to everyone involved with Middle States, including Sharon and, and the trustees as well. It's a critical part of the whole process. If you saw the news, God, this week has been, well, at least locally, a lot of good news. The agreement we signed with the School of Management at, at Binghamton University, just an extraordinary step. Shoring up our transfer efforts. Just imagine our, our students having seats held in one of the top business schools in the United States for, for completing their bachelor's degrees. It really just extraordinary four-year effort. I want to thank our entire business program faculty and, and all of our colleagues over at Binghamton University for, for that work. Four years to do that, our special articulation with one, with one program. That's quite a Herculean and Wonder Woman type effort that was undertaken over the past four years to, to get us there. Just, just extraordinary to have that kind of a smooth pipeline to such an extraordinary business school as we have right on the other side of the river. And then today, she's one of the nicest things, surprise, part of it, from the Office of the Secretary of Defense. We've long been recognized as a military friendly school. This is another level of being recognized as a military friendly school. The Office of the Secretary of Defense, employer support of the guard and reserve. And as you know, we have a number of faculty, staff and students over the years who are in the reserves recognizes Kevin Drum and SUNY Broom Community College as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force. Was quite a nice surprise today and a beautiful plaque that will hang out here in our, in our reception area and a couple of, a couple more letters of recognition to, to go along with it. And I will end my report there, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, could I say one, one thing?
Yes.
I wanted to say, first of all, congratulations to Kevin and the school for this, for this honor from the Department of Defense. And I also wanted to say, which I forgot to say, because I was kind of emotional, was I wanted to thank Dr. Kevin Drum for his leadership. He's been really impressive. I've known, I've known Kevin for a few years now, a long time before I came on the board. And, but this is the first time I had ever really seen him in action. And so I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. Leadership is hard. And I just wanted to congratulate you on, on your success at this hard job. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, very much. I appreciate it.
Well said, trustee Ball. Five point two, of academic issues. Roma?
Thank you, Chair Panichia. Good evening, everybody. I would say happy spring and hope you all enjoy the warm weather we've been experiencing. Next week should be much better. So I'm just gonna, I know my report was long, so I'm just gonna briefly highlight some things that we're currently covering. As the Chair of CAI within shared governance, we did meet very frequently with Middle States. And I probably will never meet them that many times again in the rest of my higher ed career. But we met with Chair Panichia and then again with our Student Assembly President and then again with each of our bodies. And I think we'll have a lot of great and positive feedback that we'll be able to take with us and implement next year within our shared governance bodies. So that is, that's exciting news. Another big, I think, highlight is our ad hoc working group for our academic grievance procedure has brought forth to CAI a proposal of an update of the procedure. They did a fantastic job of tightening up some of the, the timelines in which it takes to do a grievance, which at some points could have taken a whole academic year to resolve. And now it will take within one semester. They've also cleaned up much of the language to make it sound less legal and less victimizing and more on behalf of individuals who, you know, seek a resolution in what can be a very conflicting situation. And we are also looking to put out our SG elections next week. So we'll have a few new faces on our bodies this coming year. We were also, of course, proud to endorse the ILO seven for racial inequity. And I believe that's pretty much, pretty much it. Does any, sure. I don't know if anybody had any questions.
Thank you, Andrea. Five point three, academic affairs update. Dr. Penny Haynes.
Thank you. I too will try to be brief. I know that we have a fairly long report, but just a couple of things that I want to highlight, a couple of things that weren't in there. As Dr. Drum said, I'm very pleased with our business department and particularly Chair Sean Roma for making that, that, that articulation agreement happen, which is a great way to really attract students to the college and also save a lot of money, but also have a great pipeline into Binghamton University. So very impressed with that. Also want to congratulate our committee, convocation committee yesterday. They had a very successful convocation day yesterday. That committee chaired by Irene Burns and, and several others that did a great job putting on the convocation yesterday that was well attended and had a really good speaker. And a focus of this month seems to be diversity with the ILO coming through, which we're really proud to have, have gotten through. Also, many things that you'll see in the report dealing with diversity include our Assistant Professor Lucy Harkness, who presented at Cortland's Literacy Conference, specifically addressing diversity and inclusion in education. And this last month, we had an event to recruit more students of color entitled Engineers Like Me by Robert Loft House and Tamika Gordon. And on April thirtieth to, to come, Lee Heron from the Business Department will present at a statewide conference on diversity, equity and inclusion at the SUNY System Business Conference. So a lot of activity focusing around diversity and, and, and we really hope to make a difference in that area. Also, as far as the Middle States goes, again, we're really pleased with the results. Again, they're preliminary, but very pleased with that. And, and I too can't thank enough Chair Dr. Kim, Co-Chair McLean and Andrew Hagerty. And I too will reiterate that it was really, it was really a pleasure to have trustee Ball on the committee. And it really, it added a new perspective, which I think was really helpful to the committee and, and I think really, really helped our report and strengthened it. So we were really pleased with that. All of the standards, we, the committee said that they believe we met the standard, had several useful suggestions, which they referred to as collegial suggestions, and a couple of recommendations, which, which we kind of expected. So I'm pretty happy about that. Standard one, the mission, we, we did quite well on and they just gave us some collegial advice with standard two, ethics and integrity. At this point, again, collegial advice on some things that we can improve. And again, specifically focusing on diversity with standard two. Standard three, designing and delivery of the student experience. Again, no recommendations. We had several collegial suggestions, looking at, and, and some of those we actually put in there as well, looking at our online programming, focusing on our fast forward and really developing clearer pathways from high school into college and on, which were, you know, again, we knew, but that really gives us some, some folk areas to focus on. Standard four, supported the student experience. Again, several pieces of collegial advice, which I think are really useful to us, looking at our advising model. They look, they like the direction we're going with our, our advising model, trying to get a caseload and really looking at intentional start to finish, focus on our students. Again, focusing really on the pathways model, which we've talked a lot about and really want to move, move toward. Standard five, educational effectiveness and assessment. Really, we made huge progress in this area. Again, thanks to, I think in particular, Dr. McLean in the area of institutional effectiveness and really focusing on that academic assessment. And we made great strides over the last two years. We do have a recommendation, which is to continue to make sure that happens. So they're very impressed with the, the tools that we have in place and the process that is in fact taking place. And what they want to see is more of that taking place. They, they hate to come in and say, yeah, you're in good shape and now we're going to leave and, and you may stop. So they just want to ensure that we continue making that good progress. So that was our recommendation from standard five. Standard six, talking about planning resources and educational improvement. Again, all of the, all of the advice here was collegial advice, focusing on retention, modifying the five-year budget projections, which I think Mr. Sullivan's already taken care of and really focusing perhaps on, you know, how better retention and ways to combat the enrollment crisis that, you know, we're looking at across the country. Standard seven was governance, leadership and administration. And they gave us some friendly advice and they did all get, also give us a recommendation in that area to continue to assess and kind of make decisions on how we want that governance structure to look like. We have received the preliminary report yesterday from, from the team chair and we have the opportunity now to review that and submit it back to the team chair for any possible things that we, not that we disagree with the recommendation or advice, but if there's errors of fact or omission that we feel that we need to have them correct, we will send that back to them. And then he, the team chair will upload his report into the Middle States portal on the twenty eighth of April. We have the opportunity after the twenty eighth of April to actually write directly to the President of the Commission if we disagree with items or recommendations that were in the report. The Middle States Commission themselves will review that report on June second and we should expect to see a final report by the end of June. So we're really happy with the outcome. And there was just, as Dr. Drum said, a tremendous amount of work across the entire campus. Everyone really stepped up to the plate. They asked for documents when they were here and people got them to us immediately. So really a great team effort and a great team. And, and, and I think that, you know, we're all really proud and, and I think the college should be really proud of the outcome. And we've got, we've got work to do, but we knew that. So it lines up with what we want to do. My academic leadership team is having a retreat the first week of June to start focusing on our areas. And I think it just gives us some momentum to move forward. So thank you for all of your support and that concludes my report unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say I don't really have anything to measure against because it was my first time to be involved in it. But I think you guys did extraordinarily well. And, you know, I listened to the report out and thought you couldn't have asked for a better report, you, you know, particularly given the challenging times that the college has been in for the last, you know, eighteen months or so. It really should all be very proud. Kevin, your leadership has been extraordinary. And Sharon, honestly, you made it easy for us as trustees who had not been through it before. And I was very grateful for that because I was nervous, frankly, not having been through it before and, and hoping that, you know, we had all the right things to say. But you just did an extraordinary job with the trustees as well. So I think Kevin and the entire team, it was just exceptional.
Thank you, you guys. Bravo, bravo to you all. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Item five point four, Student Assembly Update. Student trustee Michael.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. Student Assembly's working on an initiative for the virtual homeless awareness event. We have received three videos from Michael Vescas detailing his experience when he was homeless in California. We have also gotten material from the United Way and Chow to post in our virtual presentation across campus. Our deadline was, was on April twenty, on April twelfth. We got all the material and we'll, we will start working on putting that together on Monday to twenty sixth. We're also working on the policy committee, but with a Binghamton University intern to, to eliminate discrepancies between the Student Assembly Constitution and the Student Assembly Handbook. Club activity on campus. The ITRP Lee Engineering Club on campus is working on battle bots. The club finance committee back in fall of twenty twenty approved funding for them to build this battle bot. I guess it's a, it's, it's a televised league that they have. It's, it's pretty national. It's, it's pretty awesome. And then also they just requested more funding. So obviously they're going to start, start the project back up again. And the ecology club is putting together a vegan cooking class for Earth Day. And PTK is, is partnered with the Women's Discussion Club and donating books to the women's prison, to a women's prison. And then election updates. So far, the entire Student Assembly is going to be vacant as of next semester because of everyone's graduating. That's it.
Thank you, Michael. Five point five, Foundation Report. Kathy?
Hi, everybody. Just wanted to point out a few of the highlights. My report pretty much contains our financial position and where we are at this point of the fifth year through February of twenty twenty one is that the foundation has a total net gain of just over five million dollars, which is a direct result of the unrealized gains in our investments and our stock investments through common fund. And our expenses are well within our budget. And we were very fortunate to have came in over budget on our private support revenue and all of our fundraising activities so far through eight months of our fiscal year. So it's really good news for us on the financial front. And we are currently working on finalizing our budget, which will be presented to our board next week. And it will include, I'm proud to say, a nice increase in funding for the campus across a number of areas. So we're very happy to share that news. Other information, we've been proud to work with Dr. Drum and the enrollment team and our financial aid folks on their creation of the Jump Start Scholarship Program, which you're going to be hearing a little bit more about in the coming couple of weeks. And it's really an exciting and great opportunity for us to invest in, you know, trying to get new students and our focus. We consider ourselves a significant part of the enrollment team on campus and that anything that we can do to help recruit students and. and that anything that we can do to help recruit students and retain them, we feel as though that's absolutely part of our charge. So we're excited about that. Just found out today, we have a new trust that will be funding critical need-based grants and aid for our students in addition to what we already have. And so we're excited about that and looking forward to the details. We'll share them when we have them. Our staff has been very busy working on a virtual alumni reunion, which is going to look a little bit different this year, obviously. For during the month of May, we are going to be offering one virtual reunion event each week. And I have to tell you that, again, we see people who we've never heard from, who are going to be able to attend reunion for their first time. They live all over the country. And so we're very excited. We've been working closely with our marcom team to give the virtual tour and appreciate all that they've done to help us out with that. We've got broom trivia. We're going to be giving away speedy packs. We've got all the local speedy vendors are going to be working with us to, you know, do a little something there because we could not host the speedy picnic, obviously, this year. So we're bringing the speedies to the, our alumni in a different way. And our scholarship application for continuing students closed on Monday. And while we were down in scholarship applications, we feel there was a lot of reasons for that. Mostly due to, I think, some of the challenges we have communicating with our students. When everybody is remote, usually we have a help desk, we're running it. We have a lot of student traffic when they are on campus. But thanks to Dr. Haynes and her team for helping us to get messaging out and working with the faculty to have them encourage their students to apply. We do, as you know, have significant private support to give away every year. So we're getting ready to have all those applications reviewed and we'll be making decisions on our incoming students. The, I don't know what I got going on here, but it's like the,
Sunset.
There you go. I was, I was trying to show you my weeping cherry tree, but the gusts of wind have just blown all the blossoms off, I think. So we, you know, our incoming application process will be open for a while. And we are seeing some challenges there as well. But now that schools are going back mostly to as close to full time as possible, we'll, we hope to see an uptick in those applications. But the pandemic and remote school has really made it difficult, I think, for us to get more applications. I did want to just end my report tonight by giving you a little sneak peek of the magazine that is currently at the printer and about ready to be mailed. And we're really excited about the magazine. We always are because we always get to tell the great stories about broom. Not only what our alumni are doing, but also the great stories of what's, what our students and our faculty and our staff and the things that are happening on campus. And so I was going to give you a quick sneak preview and just let you see what's coming. And, you know, we're just really happy. And I have to say the AmeriTi awarding that went on tonight, we did an article on a number of those professors who had more than 50 years teaching at broom. And it's so overwhelming when you think of the amount of commitment and dedication. And really our alumni, they don't have a relationship with alumni people, the Alumni Affairs Office or the Foundation or the Administration. It's with their faculty. So having said that, we've got an exciting cover that we hope is going to meet a lot of the institutional goals, including helping to identify opportunities for careers for students. So the cover story is about the five female engineers who are faculty members in our STEM division. And so I think it, it was a very, very big project to approach in this particular edition. Here you see Professor Diana LaBelle, Professor Tamika Gordon, Professor Bina Parma Savaya, Professor Sushma Maduri and Professor Susan Shwing. And it's an amazing story of what these women have been able to do. And talk about inspiring, not just inspiring, you know, young girls, but inspiring their students in general. So I know you're going to take pleasure in reading that feature. And hopefully it'll help us to get more enrollments for our STEM division and especially inspire some younger women to consider the fields of engineering. Just have a lot of key cool stories going on. Clearly, much of the imagery still indicates that where we are in the pandemic. Some key student stories here that are very moving and I think show the work that our campus and our greatest resource, our people, do to help shape the lives of these students. This just gives you an idea of kind of what were the stories that we're telling about our students. We shared information about the on-campus testing and how we have students from medical assisting who unfortunately have been able to get clinical credit for it. So they've been volunteering four days a week, or I believe when we were writing the article, four days a week, to volunteering their time to test the people on campus as required by SUNY.
Yeah, they could do. Share your screen. We're not seeing it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wish I, okay. So did you see any of it?
No.
Okay. Sorry, hold on one second. Okay, I clicked share screen. Sorry about that.
There we go.
See it now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. Sorry. I couldn't see the chat either because I was looking at the screen. So this is just the cover. These are our female engineers, which represent 30% of female representation in our STEM faculty is at 30%. And the national average in higher education is only about 17. So we're really fortunate there. And just kind of go through and show you a little bit, a sneak preview. I'm not going to show you too much because then you won't want to read it. So we know you're going to be excited to read it. Basically have been telling just a lot of the stories. Again, we're proud of everything that we get to share. We did an article about esports, which, you know, is a, is a new sport with campus that really our team is heading to the finals. It's a, it's a big, a big deal for us and something that I think many of our alumni will find rather interesting. We talk about the New York State Historic Preservation Award we got for the culinary. We share a bit about the new rehearsal space that David Glikis and his team worked very diligently with our music faculty to design and put a space together that will allow, you know, for everybody to come together in a, in a safe way and present. Here's the feature article about the engineers and their stories. And so we think you'll find it very interesting. And then there's an article written by Dominic Maderes that is a, a story about the history of the fulcrum. We also have a story about Maria Bajwa, who's a graduate. And she also is working in nursing simulation. A story about our virtual alumni reunion and also our class notes. And the last page, I don't know why it's not loading, but. So our magazine is coming and we're really quite excited because it helps to tell that amazing story. So that's my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Okay, five point six, facilities update, Mr. Legikis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I just want to touch on two or three points. You should have my report. Most importantly, we did install two bipolar ionization units at the student center, which after inspection and approval by the county health department has allowed for the reopening of the fitness lab, the weight room and the dance studio. We will continue to install these units on most campus buildings over the next few months. We also work closely with Student Village reps to reach the same end. Their fitness center has been closed and our HVAC coordinator and others made a number of recommendations. And I believe they will be easily, easily put in place to allow for the reopening of the fitness center at the student village. We've erected three tents in the vicinity of the center campus quad to encourage more outdoor activities, both academic and otherwise. And also to further advocate for the use of our outdoor space, we plan on constructing at least two permanent pavilions on campus this summer. That again, will hopefully be used for academic and other purposes. And just as a point of interest, we've already had a lot of interest expressed on the use of the tents outdoors. In fact, some, some faculty have suggested holding their classes out there. So we hope to see that occur over the next few weeks. Design work has begun on the replacement of the library, library roof. And lastly, and most importantly, I think for Nick Sarafini is Nick, we finally did have a breakthrough and had a conversation with City Hall and CAU as well. And we are going to present them with some options for outdoor signing at the CEC. I think the message to us was they need to be as context sensitive as possible. But we'll work with a local architect to try to reach that end result and then have a, have a meeting and or a conversation with both City Hall and CAU to, to see if we can get approval for installation of some of those signs. So that is my report and I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dave? Okay, five point seven, five point eight, five point nine budget.
Margaret was raising her hand, but she's not unmuted.
Can you hear me now? I just, I don't know what context sensitive means.
In, in the simplest terms, Margaret, that means that the signing should be sensitive to the context of the area. So we have a historic building. In other words, they're not going to allow us to put up an electronic sign out in front of the library. What they'd like to see is something that is going to fit in with the architecture and the surrounding architecture in the simplest term. So that's what that means.
What about size? Are they determined what size it can be?
Yeah, I think that would be part of it as well. So as I said, we'll work with one of the local architects. In fact, the City Hall and CAU recommended one that's got a lot of experience working with CAU on signing. And, and they'll present us with some options and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, five point seven, five point eight, five point nine budget transfers, grant approvals, investment report. Michael, they're just standard.
That's correct.
Okay, five point 10, human resource update, Lynn.
Good evening. The personnel report is standard activity and for informational purposes.
Thank you. Five point budget and finance update, Michael.
Yes, so most of the activities associated with this month's report were approved by the board today under the preferred agenda action items, acceptance of federal stimulus funding, round two and three for both student and institution. The proposed budget for next year and the five-year capital plan proposed, both the latter two to be submitted to Broome County later this month. Relative to month seven of the current year's budget, budget and finance continues to forecast a balanced budget for the current year. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Michael? Okay, five point one, two candidates for professional recognition increment, Dr. Penny Haynes.
Yes, this is just, the list is in there. And sorry, I don't really have anything else to add. The list is attached.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just going down the informational items. Five point one, three candidates for continued appointment. Is that just the list as well, Dr. Haynes?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Five point one, four Student Village Housing Report, Dr. Carol Ross Scott.
It's a standard report of the monthly bond payments made through April the 10th.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Scott? All right, five point one, five media report, Jesse.
Standard media report this month all, but I will post in the chat a link to our virtual open house for the spring that is happening this weekend with some interesting breakout sessions following it during the, the next week. Everybody's welcome to attend if they would like.
Thank you, Jesse. Send that to the board so we're aware of it. I don't see any other new business, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
I, who was that?
That was Kathy.
Kathy.
Trustee Connerton and trustee Coffey. Hey, every, everybody have a wonderful week and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Take care, Sharon.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, Sharon.
Bye, everybody. Take care.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Good luck.